You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, our service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford.
All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The October 8th, 2025 meeting of the, and final meeting of the 2023-2025 term is called to order at 8:02 PM. We'll first stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Toohill, final roll call of the term. Will you take the roll?
Okay. Representative Adams.
Here.
Representative Edelman.
Here.
Representative Alphon.
Here.
Representative Amore.
I am here.
Representative Anderson.
Here.
Representative Basile.
Here.
Representative Black.
Here.
Representative Bonenberger.
Here.
Representative Brooks.
Present.
Representative Dayhill.
Here.
Representative Everson.
Here.
Representative Greenberg.
Here.
Representative Hartwell.
Here.
Representative Henshaw.
Here.
Representative Heinz.
Here.
Representative Ingraham.
Here.
Representative Keefe, absent. Representative Larson, absent. Representative LaFredo, absent. Representative Mareska.
Here.
Representative McCall.
Here.
Representative McCormick, absent. Representative Nuppani.
Here.
Representative Papalizio.
I am here.
Representative Sharkey.
Yes.
Representative Sresla.
Here.
Representative Sumro, absent. Representative Toohill, here. Representative Verderam.
Here.
Representative Waterman.
Here.
And ex officio, I see, First Selectman Jamie Cosgrove with us, as well as our town clerk, Lisa Arben. You have a quorum, Madam Moderator.
Thank you so much, Frank.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's move on to approval of the minutes of the September 10th, 2025 meeting of the RTM. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting, the minutes as submitted?
Second.
Second? Who was, who moved it?
Abigail.
Abigail moved the minutes. And second?
Dan.
Dan, okay, Representative Edelman, all right. Of those in favor of approving, any additions or corrections? Those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The minutes are approved as submitted. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. For correspondence, we have two pieces of correspondence. One is a letter from the Chair of the Board of Finance, Joe Mooney, regarding a bonding resolution that is going to be heard later on on the agenda, so I will not read it tonight, read it, but it is the wording of the resolution. It will be read later on in the meeting. That will be taken up by Ways and Means. The second piece of correspondence is a letter from Kurt Johnson that contained a petition from a number of neighbors in the Short Beach area requesting that Jefferson Place in Short Beach be, once again, deemed a town road, or treated as a town road, and deemed as a town road. The correspondence is lengthy, but that's the gist of it. It is accompanied by a petition, a letter sent to the First Selectman, and a summary of research done by the Office of Legislative Research. In speaking with Mr. Johnson, he's aware that this is the final meeting, and there wouldn't be time to take it up in any real way in this term. So I'm going to read, I'm going to submit it for the record to the Secretary and ask that the residents return with this correspondence in the new term. Okay, all right, let's move on to item five. To consider and if appropriate approve a transfer request from the Finance Director for fiscal services, fiscal year 25 budget, from tax refunds for the tax collector, tax appeals, I'm sorry, $16,000, tax appeals in the amount of $78,549, expenses and claims in the amount of $19,186, for a total of $113,735, to the legal fund for an equivalent amount of $113,735. This was heard by Admin Services. Representative Edelman.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This transfer is to cover a shortfall for the legal budget for fiscal year 2025. There were some unforeseen circumstances, such as zoning issues and litigation the town had been brought into, and this transfer is to cover the shortfall. This matter was heard by Admin Services last night, October 7th, and you approved unanimously on a six to nothing vote, and I would put that in the form of a motion. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion from the committee to approve this transfer of $113,735. Are there any questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving this transfer, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The transfer is approved. Thank you. Okay. Item six, to consider and if appropriate approve a budget transfer request for fiscal '25 for elderly services, from regular wages and salaries, $4,854, to accumulated sick time for the same, the equivalent amount, $4,854. Once again, Admin Services, Mr. Edelman.
Thank you again, Madam Moderator. This is a fiscal year 2025 budget transfer. The purpose of this transfer is to cover an accumulation of a sick time payout for the retirement of the past director. And this again was heard by Admin last evening on the October 7th, and approved unanimously by a six to nothing vote, and I would put that in the form of a motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion to approve a transfer of $4,854. Are there any questions or concerns? Hearing none, let's have a vote. All those in favor of the transfer, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The item carries. Thank you. Number seven, to consider and if appropriate approve a fiscal '25 budget transfer request for information technology, from communications, $7,500, professional development, $1,200, for a total amount of $8,700, to regular wages and salaries, $4,700, other supplies, $3,000, and technology acquisitions, $1,000, for an equivalent amount of $8,700. Also heard by Admin Services, Mr. Edelman.
Thanks again, Madam Moderator. This transfer, as just articulated, is to reallocate the funds to cover budget overruns from the information and technology budget for, again, for fiscal year 2025, as a lot of these are, just cleaning up the budget from last year. Again, it was heard last evening, October 7th, by Admin Services, and passed unanimously by a six to nothing vote, and I would ask that that be, I would put that in the form of a motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have a motion, the transfer of $8,700 for information technology. Any questions or concerns? All in favor of this transfer, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none, the item carries. Okay, we've got a long list, so let's give it a go. Item eight, to consider and if appropriate approve transfers and resolutions from the First Selectmen for salary adjustments for unaffiliated supervisory managerial positions for fiscal 2026, from contingency, $40,413, to wages and salaries, I'm just going to say the department executive, $1,675, finance, $4,039, tax collector, $3,292, town clerk, $760, planning and zoning, no dollars, information technology, $2,817, human resources, $4,889, police, $7,083, fire, $6,715, Public Works, $2,969, Parks, Rec, and Senior Services, $2,870, executives, $7, finance, $16, tax collector, $13, town clerk, $10, planning and, so these are for payroll expense, planning and zoning, zero, information technology, $11, human resources, $19, police, $28, fire, $26, public works, $12, parks, rec, and senior services, $12, and then a transfer out to the Sewer Utility Fund for $3,150, and a transfer out to the Human Services Fund for $5,327, for an equivalent amount of $40,413, covered by contingency. This was heard by Admin Services. Mr. Edelman.
Thank you again, Madam Moderator. So, out of the $40,413 to cover retroactive wages and, that portion for retroactive wages and payrolls is for retroactivity from July 1st of last year for the unaffiliated supervisory managerial positions for fiscal year 2026. I believe it's a 2.5 increase in wages. The notations you see in that $40,413 transfer that is labeled accrued payroll expenses, my understanding is that is being paid, are ADP calculations, presumably such things as processing fees. The corresponding Sewer Utility Fund transfer monies in the amount of $3,150 is an operating transfer for wages, salary, and payroll expenses, and likewise, the $5,327 coming out of operating to the Human Services Fund for salary changes for people in management supervisory unaffiliated positions. Not surprisingly, this was heard last night by Admin Services, passed six to nothing, and again, I would put that in the form of a motion. Thank you.
Okay, and then we have a separate resolution pertaining to this transfer after this. So we have, we have a committee report, all those, any questions or comments, concerns about these transfers. Representative Brooks.
I'm sorry. I just want to point out that this is a 2.5% increase when, when we've all heard for months, years, inflation is more like 3%. If we had given these employees a 3% increase, it would have cost an additional $8,082, and it would have made them whole. That's all, that's all I'm saying.
Representative Ingraham.
Thank you. Just through you to First Selectmen, this is on top of their regular raises. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. So this is an additional 2.5 on top of the 2.2, 2.25 that we gave at regular budget time. Thank you. So that's 5%.
So we gave them a 5% increase, and we gave them a 2.5 retention bonus because we weren't paying them enough last year. So we had to add to give them more, and it just goes back to my theory that we need to start taking care of our employees on a yearly basis on the regular, instead of trying to play catch-up because we're trying to retain them. These are people that we all believe are talented, myself included, and so, so it's just, it's just my philosophy, and I'm looking to fight on it, but, but, so we gave them a retention to catch up where we were lagging behind, and, and, and the increase down the road still was not a 3%, so it goes back to my original statement.
Mr. Edelman, you stood, did you have something to say?
No, I was agreeing with Representative Edelman.
Okay.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
Just through you, I'd like to point out that that should have been the original comment, instead of that we were shorting the employees.
Well, that's your opinion.
Through you.
Okay. Do we have a vote? We should have a vote on this since we're, do we have any other questions or comments?
Do we have to do the corresponding?
I think we can do it. The corresponding, Mr. Edelman read it as part of this, so I can read it again. I didn't read it in the original thing, but the chairman did.
Point of procedure, Madam Moderator?
Yes.
I'd just like to state that I just saw Representative Alex Larson come into the meeting. He's present now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the, there is, there's a separate corresponding utility fund transfer, $3,150, to cover the, the one up that is in the original transfer, $3,137 for wages and salaries, zero for retroactive wages, and $13 for accrued payroll expense for a corresponding amount of $3,150. That was addressed by Mr. Edelman, so we don't have to open it up again. Any comments or questions on that? Okay, all in favor of these transfers, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, those transfers carry, then let's move on to the resolution, which refers to the transfer out of the Human Services Fund of $5,327. The RTM approve a transfer out of $3,150 to the Sewer Utility Fund to fund salary changes for exempt management supervisory level unaffiliated positions. The transfer will increase the fiscal year 2026 budget in the Sewer Utility Fund from $5,159,306 to $5,162,456. The corresponding Human Services Transfer and Resolution appropriation increase, operating transfer in, $5,327, and the appropriation increase would be equivalent $5,327, consisting of $5,306 from wages and salaries, zero for retroactive wages, and $21 from accrued payroll expense. Are there, we'll take that vote, and then we have another resolution for the earlier transfer. Any questions or comments on that resolution? First Selectman Cosgrove, yes.
Moderator, you actually just read the transfer that corresponds, those numbers you just gave, right? Did you just read this one?
Yes.
So you read the numbers, so you might as well.
Yep.
So just, you may as well continue to.
To read the resolution, okay.
And that's the resolution. The first one was for the Sewer Utility.
Okay.
The second one's for Human Services. There's no objections. We both, you can act on both of them at the same time.
Very good. I missed, it's on the second page. The RTM approves a, the resolution resolved, that the RTM approves a transfer out of $5,327 to the Human Services Fund to fund salary changes for exempt management supervisory level unaffiliated positions. This transfer will increase the fiscal year '26 budget in the Human Services Fund from $2,092, $494 to $2,097,821, and, $821. Okay, so both those resolutions are covered in the figures. Any questions or concerns about the resolutions? Hearing none, we'll have a vote. Those in favor of these, of these two resolutions, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The resolutions are approved. Okay. Item nine, to consider and if appropriate approve a transfer from the First Selectmen for a salary adjustment for the Director of Planning, Conservation, and Development for fiscal '25, from contingency, $6,682, to wages and salaries, planning and zoning, $6,656, accrued payroll expense, $26, for a total of, equivalent total of $6,682. Mr. Edelman.
Thank you again, Madam Moderator. This money is coming out of contingency for a salary adjustment for the position, as it said, for the Director of Planning, Conservation, and Development for the current fiscal year. The individual is not part of the bargaining unit previously, and as such, received a pay increase, and the new position is also now nonaffiliated. There was some tough questioning and some issues brought to First Selectman Cosgrove's attention last evening, and he was very articulate in explaining the circumstances, and the bottom line is, this is a proactive measure in the town presumably geared towards retention. As I indicated, it was heard last night on October 7th of this year, and approved unanimously by a six to nothing vote, and I would put this in the form of a motion, please.
Okay, we have a motion from the committee. Any questions or concerns? Representative Everson.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Through you to the First Selectmen, if we could hear from the First Selectmen about this new position, because this is a new position in town as of October 1st. At our last meeting, when we approved the contract, there were questions about this whole, the position and the new shift in the department. The First Selectman was not with us. He's with us tonight on his final RTM meeting of his 12 years in Branford, so.
Thank you.
Good to hear from you. Thank you.
So, yes, this position, Director of Planning, Conservation, and Development, is technically a new title. We integrated the two departments, Planning and Zoning, and Inland Wetlands, is now integrated with one another. With this change, we also created the position, the former, which is held by the former Director of Inland Wetlands, is now the Deputy Director of this new integrated department. In, you know, reviewing with staff, looking at other models that exist, we feel that this was an opportunity to kind of realize some efficiencies, streamlining some processes, also improve coordination and collaboration between the departments, and through those, so we feel it's a better system for the applicant, staff, the commissions, the respective commissions, that will still remain, the regulatory process still remains, as well as the residents. I feel that not only does this allow us to, with current staff levels and other resources that are available among the two former departments, but now combined under one, it not only allows us to focus on the regulatory process, the permitting process, as they have dedicated over the years, but also more emphasis on planning for our town. So we see that this is, it will be a stronger department and a benefit to the community at the end. And I'm sure many of you, hope you're aware, that we just went to finally an online permitting system, and, you know, having these departments, this will, once again, kind of help, help that process along and streamlining it as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks very much. Are there any questions for First Selectmen? Okay, all right, hearing none, we'll have a vote.
Madam Moderator, I think there's a handout.
Oh, I'm sorry. Representative Adams.
It's good for you. Sorry. You know, through you to First Selectmen. My only concern, just because I hadn't heard about it, read about it beforehand, was, you know, streamlining efficiency, of course, we want, we'd love to see that. I am concerned about losing, what has been put in place for conflicts between, say, planning and zoning, wanting to go in one direction, safer, and not a development, and maybe conservation, inland wetlands, that might want to not go in the same direction, given that, that was my concern. And I know you all disagree, so I would just love to keep in check.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think that, you know, I understand your initial reaction to that, but.
It's a question.
Right, and I, and I don't necessarily think that there should have ever been a conflict, and getting back to the more, the planning aspect of it, you know, I've always felt strongly that we need to take a balanced approach. I mean, we need to take a balanced approach, whether development and conservation, they both play an important part in, you know, not only today, but, you know, defining our, our town for the future, and where we want to go. So, not worried about a conflict, I think this gives us a greater opportunity to, as I said, a greater emphasis on, on actual planning. I don't know if conflict's the right word, but, that I would see, but, you know, or that was created, but maybe, you know, in the town with certain things, we are more reactive, right? Because it was, an application would come in, or opportunity come in, we're responding to that application, and of course, you have to follow the regulations. That's what we want each commission member, that's what they're, they're, and those are still intact. You still have a Wetlands Commission, you still have a Planning and Zoning Commission, and you still have separate regulations, and they need, those commissioners need to apply those regulations to, to each, you know, applicant and decision that they put forward. But prior to that, I think this gives us an opportunity to really improve, you know, put a greater emphasis on planning and where we want to go, kind of striking that balance between conservation and development.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. We didn't vote, did we? Okay. Now we have. Any, any other comments or questions about this item nine? Okay, hearing none, let's have a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The item carries. And last but not least, number 10, to consider and if, for Admin Services, to consider and if appropriate approve a transfer request from the First Selectmen for a supplemental appropriation into the lease fund for fiscal 2026, from contingency, $300,000, and a transfer out for the lease fund for the town, 300, an equivalent amount of $300,000. Mr. Edelman.
Thank you again, Madam Moderator. Thank everybody on both sides of the aisle, by the way, for their service this term. As we know, the Public Works lease has not been extended, was not extended, so the department had to move to a new facility. This $300,000 transfer covers the balance of the current fiscal year and the next two fiscal years of the lease payments. Inquiry was made, and the committee was satisfied that things were done prudently in the, with respect to the terms of the lease, and all standards of fiduciary duty were met. There was some inquiry at the meeting concerning those issues, and the committee was satisfied, the result thereof, it was approved six to nothing by Admin Services on October 7th last evening, as I stated, and I would put that in the form of a motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Are there questions or comments for the committee? Yes, Mr. Black.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This, if we add in the 70-some thousand dollars, we'll have about 100,000 left in contingency to carry us through the year. Is that correct?
I'm going to defer to.
For this fiscal year. We've really drawn it down quickly. And we started with 500,000, correct, for this fiscal year?
Correct. It's my understanding. I said I think that's my understanding, yes.
Thank you.
First Selectmen.
Peter, through the moderator, I believe this contingency transfer of the 300,000 that we just did was closing out, last year's, was closing out last year's budget.
It was '25.
For year '26 contingency.
This is a mispronounced. Point of information, Madam Moderator.
I'm looking.
Is there a typo?
Do I have the floor?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Yes, so, I mean, from what, from what our First Selectmen just stated, so this is a fiscal year '25.
That's right.
Transfer, so the call has to be corrected, because the call states for fiscal year '26.
Yes, and the call, the Board of Finance says '26.
No, I got taken by the '26.
So the call has to be corrected, you know, for item 10, it says, you know, fiscal year 2026, so from this point on, it's going to say fiscal year '25. Thank you.
Okay.
Motion must be rescinded and made for that, if you really want to.
Okay. Thank you, Representative Brooks.
All right. We will rescind the motion from the committee report, and then restate it as fiscal '25. I will read just the item, to consider and if appropriate approve a transfer request from the First Selectmen for a supplemental appropriation into lease fund fiscal 2025. from the first selectman for a supplemental appropriation into lease fund fiscal 2025.
Do we have to make a motion?
Actually, no, no, no.
We need to make a motion to correct the call?
We're wrong. I'm wrong. I apologize. You're taking money out of contingency from fiscal year 2025 and putting it into the lease fund for fiscal year 2026.
26.
So, the call is right.
Okay.
You're not taking out a contingency, it doesn't say you're taking out a contingency of 2026, you're putting in the lease fund of 2026 from the contingency of 2025.
Can I say something?
Yes.
It doesn't state that.
Thank you, Representative Brooks. You know, that, I believe is correct, but I think for clarification, it should state that, you know, the 300,000 is coming from 2025 fiscal year, right?
We can clarify that in the, it is, it is taken directly from the, from the Board of Finance's agenda, so we can clarify it in the minutes. How's that, how'd that work?
Why don't we just, I will make a motion to amend the call to state that the money is coming from, the contingency in fiscal year 2025 is being moved into fiscal year 2026 to cover the lease fund.
Well, 300,000 of it is.
Okay.
Right.
All right. I'll second.
We have a second. All in favor? Do we have any discussion on this language to clarify that it's coming from 20, contingency from 2025, or from contingency, period? Okay. Yes.
So.
Mr. Hartwell.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So, just then, to clarify what Representative Brooks was saying, I'm sorry, Representative Black, not Representative Brooks, we are not drawing down from the, the current contingency fund, which is set, as he said, at 500,000. We are not drawing, from what I'm hearing here, we're not drawing down from that, so that money remains intact.
Yes.
So, we'll have about 400 left.
I'm not, I don't know what the other numbers are here, but just the 300,000 is not being drawn down, according to what I'm hearing, from the 2026 current budget.
Madam Moderator, less than 400 left.
Okay. We can look at those numbers, but that's, my concern is that the 300 is not, not coming out.
That's a big chunk.
It's a large chunk. You're absolutely right. When you said it, I was a little concerned.
I think it's a smaller, but still substantial chunk, so thanks.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, I think we've, we have a motion to amend that so that it's, it clarifies that that 300,000 is not coming out of the fiscal 26 budget, and, yes.
I personally don't think we need a motion. I think it's written correctly. We have the account number from contingency that it's going out of, and it's stating that it's going, where it's going into of the lease fund for fiscal year 2026. So, I think as written, it's a correct resolution. We have the account number there.
Point of information, the account number that, that is 10149040-588802, named contingency, is the account number for the 2025 contingency line, so you don't need to clarify it. It's the account number that matters, and so.
And it states where.
It states where it's going into, which matters, but I'm going to get yelled at by Representative Black. Go.
Through you, Madam Moderator. I want to stop that they were unique, but in the operating budget, we maintain the same account numbers from year to year. In the capital budget, you can't find out what fiscal year it's in. So, you know, I, I'm happy that it's coming out of fiscal year 25, especially considering some of this is paying for a lease that we've already have. I'm very happy with that, but it doesn't tell us by looking at the account number, and I've known that, you know, partly since working with registrar voters and dealing with fiscal and, you know, filling, checking account numbers.
I stand corrected.
Mr. Hentel.
Yes, I think with that in mind, we should make a formal clarification that that line item is 2025.
As an amendment to the agenda, or, or in addition to the minutes?
It is an amendment to the agenda.
Well, we, we have a motion on the floor.
We have a motion on the floor.
That has been seconded.
It's already on Florida.
Yes, and, and seconded, so.
Well, then, we should do that.
Well, we're about to, okay? Any other comments on this, on this change? Okay. We need a vote. Those in favor of amending the language to clarify that the, the contingency is from 2025, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Okay. Okay.
The item carries. Okay. You please also reflect this discussion.
Now we have to vote.
Yes, I, I, you'll just, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have an amended language, so let's try this again. To consider and if appropriate, approve a transfer request from the first selectman for a supplemental appropriation into the lease fund for fiscal 26 from contingency from fiscal 25, $300,000, transfer into, transfer out lease fund for an equivalent amount of $300,000. Any discussions on this transfer? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The transfer carries. Okay. Number 11, to consider and if appropriate, approve the following transfers and resolution from the Finance Director to fund the Board of Education feasibility study. The BOE feasibility study, 100, for 150,000. A general fund transfer increase, fiscal 25 increase, the fund balance brought forward 150,000 to transfer, the transfer out fund, to capital projects fund for the Board of Education for an equivalent amount of 150,000. And then I'm going to continue to read this all. The second half of the approval process is to increase the appropriation in the capital projects fund by approving the following. The capital projects fund increase comes from an operating transfer in, or 150,000 to fund an increase to the Board of, for the Board of Ed feasibility study for an increase of 150,000. So, we'll do the transfers first and then the resolution. Mr. Brooks.
Hi. The Education Committee heard this on October 6th. There were five members present. We got a presentation from the Board, not the Board of Ed, from the superintendent. And basically, what this is, is if, if this body will recall, as well as the public, there was an extensive study done, master plan facilities, lots of members, stakeholders were involved, myself, Representative Ingraham, the first selectman, and out of that, part of that plan was that there, that the Board of Ed approved, we eliminate Sliny as a working, that the Board of Ed approved eliminating Sliny as a, as a school, and moving the students from there into Murphy and Tisco. And in addition, subsequently, since then, the state has come out with some language saying that if you add pre-K to your, your, your grade schools, you can get additional reimbursement. So, the feasibility study that we're looking to approve tonight would be to study the, if it's, pardon my redundancy, feasible, to make that plan move forward, including not just the students from Sliny, but pre-K into those two buildings. And, and the reason why it's, it's a, why we approved it as a board unanimously was because it would increase the reimbursement we got back from the state to the neighborhood of 60%. So, this is what this is doing. It was approved unanimously, 5 to 0, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Any questions or comments for the committee on this, this transfer? Mr. Toohill.
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. Just to add to what Representative Brooks just stated, so, the way the reimbursements work, it's basically the same thing as when First Selectman Cosgrove, Peter Banca, the permanent building committee chair for 10 or 11 years, and also Jim Finch and others, of course, the Board of Ed, and, you know, the members and the superintendent, it was the same formula. What they did and what's planned for the Branford schools is, right, you want to get the most money back from the state. These are our tax dollars, right, that we've already paid to the state, so that we get the maximum back for our school projects. So, what Mr. Brooks stated, you know, is correct. He said that there would be different grants that you would get, and the way it would work, it's the same as, as what we got before, for Walsh. So, the good thing about Walsh was a hybrid, you know, it's 20% for new construction, 37% for rehab. So, this would all be rehab here for the two elementary schools, 37%. But, as Mr. Brooks stated, you would also get 15% more if pre-K was in those two buildings, which, you know, the plan is to put pre-K there. So, now you're over 50% back from the state. And then also Blaze Levitin with Dr. Tranberg, they said that 2% to 3% more would be for special ed. So, now you're up to 53%, 55%. And then Blaze Levitin said that 40% to 50% of all school districts in the state have put in special bills to the legislature to get even more back. So, this project that the Board of Ed is, you know, just beginning, as Representative Brooks said, to close Sliny and to expand, you know, the two elementary, Tisco and Murphy, I mean, the, we might get back as over 65 or even higher, you know, from the state. So, this is a good start to the project, and, and so the thing I would do is urge you all, you know, to vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. Toohill.
Welcome.
Other, we have, Representative Bazil.
Yes, through you.
Yes.
Is that right? I'm a member of the Education Committee, and I had the opportunity to be at the meeting on Monday night, and I will tell you, I was extremely impressed with Superintendent and also Blaze Levitin, as they kind of laid out the plans for this potential program, building program going forward. I want the RTM to understand that while we're talking about the reimbursement rate, which is in fact very attractive, there is also, it's also grounded in good pedagogy and good educational planning that will be good for our students. So, it's a double win, really, because what they're proposing to do, and we'll see in the end, when they do the feasibility study, whether or not all of this will happen and come in on target, but not only are they doing a, a very creative financing in order to maximize the amount we'll get from the state, but it's also being done with the good education of the students in mind. And I think that's important for all of us to understand. It's not just a numbers game.
Yeah, thank you. That's a great rationale. Okay, we had another hand. Representative McCall, did you have your hands up? Did I see you have your hand up? No?
No.
Okay. Anybody else? I thought I saw another hand. Okay, sorry. Sorry, didn't mean to put you on the spot. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll have a vote on this transfer, and then we will read the resolution. All in favor of the transfer of 150,000 for this feasibility study, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? None? Hearing none, the item carries. Okay, resolution, that the RTM improve and increase in appropriations for the fiscal 25 general fund budget from 145,913,589 to 146,63,589. This increase will be funded through an appropriation from fund balance and will be to fund studies related to the Board of Education's master plan. Okay. Any questions or comments for the Education Committee on this? Oh, did you vote on the resolution?
Representative Amori, we voted, that's what we voted on. I mean, you just stated, but that's, the vote we just made did that already. So, so we don't, that's not, that's not a motion I make, that, that was done.
Okay, but we have to vote on the, the change in the numbers for the fund, for the overall budget. That's a separate resolution.
Okay. We didn't, we didn't vote on that in committee, so.
Okay.
We can 4-4-1 that if you'd like.
I think we'll pass on 4-4-1.
No, no, we didn't, we didn't take that vote in committee.
Oh, you didn't?
We just voted on the entire thing as one, we didn't make a separate motion, we made it as one, as one item. So, including in the, including in the, that and the resolve to bring the thing up, we made it as one motion and as, as an entire body.
All right, then we will vote on the entire thing.
It was one, we had one item on our call, and it was that, it is item 11. It wasn't item 11A and B, it was item 11.
Gotcha. All right, we're voting on the entire thing, including the resolution. All, any other comments or questions? Clarifications? Please God, no more clarifications. Okay. Any, let's then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any abstentions?
Okay, the items, item carries. Okay. Item 12, this was re-referved from the September meeting, to consider and if appropriate, approve the following transfer request from GGB, General Government Buildings, for fiscal 25 from the following, other supplies for $10,588, meal supplies $437, and for a total of $11,025, to utilities for an equivalent amount of $11,025. This was heard by Public Works. Mr. Bonhamberger.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Public Services heard this via Zoom last Thursday, October 2nd. We voted unanimously, 5-0, to approve it. As Mr. Journey explained, the increase in costs to utilities was related to the increase in costs to utilities that we've all felt this summer. Put that in the form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion from the committee. Any questions or concerns about this transfer of $11,025? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the item, the transfer carries. Item 13, to consider and if appropriate, approve a budget transfer request for fiscal 25 for Public Works, from seasonal and part-time help, $21,377, streetlights, $6,577, for a total of $27,954, to overtime, $21,377, to utilities, for $6,577, for an equivalent amount of $27,954. This was also heard by Public Works. Mr. Bonhamberger.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Public Services, of course, again, met October 2nd via Zoom to talk about this as well. Mr. Zalinski explained that the overtime was a result of projects that were ongoing. He wanted to make sure that the projects continued going, and part of that had to do with the move to a new, a new location, unexpected maintenance on the vehicle fleet. Utilities, same thing as the, the last item, utilities are more expensive, and so this reflects that. The committee voted 5-0 unanimously to approve, and I put that in the form of a motion. I'd also like to say very briefly, it's been an honor and a privilege to work with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. We have any comments or questions on this transfer? Okay, hearing none, we'll have a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Okay, the item carries. Okay, moving on, to consider and if appropriate, approve a transfer request for Parks and Recreation for fiscal 25, for regular wage, from regular wages and salaries, $17,132, seasonal and part-time wages, $27,320, grounds maintenance, $1,300, postage, $1,175, office supplies, $1,085, other supplies, $1,350, equipment, $175, furniture and pictures, $2,762, travel, $1,500, for a total of $53,799, to accumulated sick time, $9,336, overtime, $15,770, uniforms and. and clothing, $841, utilities, water, gas, and electric, $25,020, purchase of services for maintenance, $2,832, for an equivalent amount of $53,799. This was heard by Ways and Means. Mr. Hartwell.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So the Ways and Means Committee met last Thursday, the 2nd, in a special meeting. And at that meeting, Director Izzo explained that the wages and salary expenditure was primarily accrued salary owed to retiring Parks and Rec Director Alex Paluzzi, and that the current fiscal 26 budget has been adjusted to better anticipate the overtime needs that showed up in this, in this. So it was approved 4-0 unanimously in our committee, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have a recommendation from the committee. Any questions or concerns for the committee on this transfer? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The item carries. Okay, so moving on to item 16, which is a resolution regarding bonding. So we're going.
Item 15, Madam Moderator.
I'm sorry, I skipped over that. Item 15, to consider and if appropriate, the following transfer request from the Finance Director for fiscal 25, from bond payments for $351,235, to interest, interest general purpose, $226,310, to interest for schools, $124,925, for an equivalent amount of $351,235. This was re-referved from last, from September, and this was heard this time by Ways and Means. So Mr. Hartwell.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This was also done last Thursday, the 2nd. Finance Director Finch explained that the bond payment line item anticipates future leads. So we put the money in one bucket, and then when we know where it's got to go, we move it. So that's all this is doing here. And we're, so we're moving the money accordingly out of the bond payments category into two line items that are actually being paid out. So this was also approved unanimously in our committee, and I put it on the form of a motion.
Okay, we have a committee report. Any questions for Ways and Means on this transfer?
Madam Moderator, I have a question.
Yes, Representative Anderson.
Through, through you to Chair, what is the general purpose for $226,000? Do we have any designation as to where that's going?
It's all for interest payments.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah, so.
I wasn't sure if it was equipment or something concrete.
I knew what it was.
Interest on bond.
Yes, it is that service. I tried to.
Bonds, a general purpose bonds and the school bonds, the two. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments? Nope. Okay, hearing none, we'll have a vote. Those in favor of this transfer of $351,235, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, hearing none, that item carries. Item 16, again, okay, to consider and if appropriate, approve the following resolution. We will read the resolution, and then I will need a motion to waive the reading of the entire resolution after that. So we will read this. Resolve, a resolution amending, amending resolution appropriating $8,300,000 for Main Street Road and related improvements, and authorizing, authorizing the issue of $8,300,000 in bonds of the town to meet said appropriation, and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose to increase the appropriation and bond authorization therein by an additional $6,750,000.
Six million.
Six million, I'm sorry, $6,750,000. Okay, so that is the resolution. Do we have a motion to waive the reading of the full resolution?
I'll move.
A second? Any questions, concerns about this waiving? All right, all in favor of waiving the reading of the entire resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we will not read the resolution. It is on file in the Town Clerk's Office. Anyone would wish to read it. Okay, we have read the resolution. This was heard by Ways and Means. Mr. Hartman.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This was also covered in last Thursday's meeting. There was extensive discussion with the Town Engineer Heffery as to the increase in the bonding authorization from the initial 8.3 million, which was done over two years ago, to $15 million roughly, when the project was put out for bidding, rebidding. He pointed out that the original number of 8.3 million was an estimate, and that the first round of bidding came in at over $10 million. The new authorization also covers the possibility that the state reimbursement might not cover some additional items, and that the total local share for the project is expected to be 1.175 million, with the rest coming from the state. So what we need to keep in mind here tonight is that while we are doing a bonding resolution for roughly $15 million, that all but 1.175 million is going to be picked up by the state. And what we need to do here tonight is to set up the stage so that when they go out for bidding and doing the project, that people will know that they're going to get paid. We won't be paying at the end of the day, the state will be. But this is the process that we go through. As I said, there was extensive discussion, and the vote on this particular item was three in favor and one opposed. And so I put in form of a motion the fact that we approved this resolution.
All right, we have a committee report. Are there questions or comments? Representative Waterman.
Yes, so I am a member of Ways and Means and have voted against this resolution. As Representative Hartwell said, there was extensive discussion around this. And my concerns, I mean, this project has gone, while I totally support the renovations to Main Street and the green, this process, the lack of clarity around the process and the timelines moving forward gives me the cause. And there's been a lot of delays. The delays have been very difficult, and it loses community. And so I would really, I won't feel comfortable voting for this until there's a really good clarity on the process and the timelines to this.
Okay, thank you very much, Representative Waterman. Other comments or questions for the committee? Okay, hearing none, we'll have a vote. We have to have roll calls over.
Representative Adams.
Approved.
Representative Haidelman.
Yes.
Representative Alphon.
Yes.
Representative Anderson.
Yes.
Representative Basile.
Yes.
Representative Black.
Yes.
Representative Bonnberger.
Yes.
Representative Brooks.
Yes.
Representative Dayhill.
Yes.
Representative Everson.
Yes.
Representative Greenberg.
Yes.
Representative Hartwell.
Yes.
Representative Henshaw.
Yes.
Representative Hines.
Yes.
Representative Ingraham.
Yes.
Representative Larson.
Representative Mareska.
Yes.
Representative McCall.
Yes.
Representative McCormick, absent.
Representative Nupani.
Yes.
Representative Papalizio.
Yes.
Representative Sharkey.
Yes.
Representative Srestha.
Yes, please, one second.
Representative Toohill, yes. Representative Verderam.
Yes.
Representative Waterman.
No.
I'm sorry, did you say no?
Yes.
But thank you.
She said no. She said yes to no.
So it passed, Madam Moderator.
Okay, the item passes. Okay, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. All right, item 17. Mr. Hartman, I'd like some guidance on how you, how you dealt with this in committee, so I know which parts of it we're voting. Are we voting it all at once, or did you vote part by part on this very lengthy series of resolutions? Item 17.
So we voted, I'm sorry, I've got different numbering on my, I'm looking at my minutes here.
Okay.
They voted on the entire res.
You voted on the entire res?
Yes.
Okay. It wasn't split.
Okay.
Right, because it wasn't, there were no two pieces in it, yeah.
Okay, that's okay. I just didn't want to get into the same thing as with education. So to consider and if appropriate, approve the following transfers and resolutions from the Finance Director for Fund Balance classifications to finance two engineering projects. Here we go. Stony Creek Wharf, $1 million. This project will be funded through a grant from the Connecticut Port Authority's Small Harbor Improvements Projects Program, or SHIP, for $800,000. The balance of the local share will be funded through Fund Balance, Fund Balance. Transfer general fund, the Fund Balance brought forward, $200,000, transfer out, $200,000, to transfer out, $200,000. The second half of the approval process is to increase the appropriation in the Infrastructure Enhancement Fund by approving the following: an increase in the operating transfer in, $200,000, and miscellaneous state and federal grants for $800,000, for a total of $1 million, to capital infrastructure for an equivalent amount of $1 million. Resolve that the RTM improve and approve an increase in appropriations for the fiscal 25 general fund budget from $144,182,612, to $144,382,612. This increase will be funded through an appropriation from Fund Balance and will be used to supplement a grant for the Stony Creek Wharf project.
So that, yes, that's what we did. We did that alone.
You did that alone?
Yes, we did.
Okay, we will stop there. And Mr. Hartman, would you report out, please?
Hartwell, so the project, hopefully, is going to get done in the winter of 2026, 27. It's going to take a while to get underway. But the good news here is that we're, we're putting $200,000, and the state's putting in $800,000, and we're going to get this project done. So we very much approved it unanimously, and put that in the form of a motion.
All right, we have a motion from the committee to approve this transfer for the Stony Creek Wharf. Any questions or comments for the committee? Okay, hearing none, we'll have a vote on this transfer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The item carries. Okay. Town center sidewalks, $1,200,000. This project will be funded through a grant from the state's Small Town Economic Assistance Program, or STEEP, for $1 million. The balance of the local share will be funded through Fund Balance. Transfers will be from the Fund Balance brought forward for $200,000, to the transfer out fund for infrastructure enhancement, $200,000. The second half of the approval process is to increase the appropriation in the Infrastructure Enhancement Fund by approving the following: operating transfer in of $200,000, to, and miscellaneous state and grant, federal, state and federal funds of $1 million, for a total of $1,200,000, and increase the capital infrastructure budget by $1,200,000. Resolve that the RTM approve an increase in appropriations for the fiscal 25 general fund budget from $144,382,612, to $144,582,612. This increase will be funded through an appropriation from Fund Balance and will be used to supplement a grant for the town center sidewalk project. Mr. Hartwell.
Thank you. Again, this was done last Thursday. The thing to know about this is that these sidewalks are actually adjacent to Main Street, so they're not part of the Main Street project themselves. They're sidewalks, so they're running off to the side, primarily to the north side of Main Street. So this project's going to be undertaken once Main Street itself is done. And the local share will, as I said, comes out of undesignated Fund Balance, which I certainly approve of. And once again, we're putting in $200,000, and now the state is going to put in a million for this. So most of this money is coming from somewhere else, and we very much approved it unanimously. Put that in the form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion from the committee to approve, sorry, to approve this transfer. Any questions or comments for, for the committee on this transfer and this resolution? Hearing none, we'll have a vote. All in favor of this $200,000 transfer from Fund Balance to the Capital Infrastructure Fund, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The item carries. Okay. To consider and if appropriate, approve the following transfers and resolution from the Finance Director pursuant to the Energy Performance Contract Proposal. For the increase, Fund Balance brought forward, $1,330,977, to the transfer out to the Municipal Facilities Fund, $1,330,977. The second half of the approval process is to increase the appropriation in the Municipal Facilities Fund by approving the following: operating transfer in of $1,330,977, and NGO grants of $264,203, to capital infrastructure for an equivalent, well, for an equivalent amount of $1,595,000. Resolve that the RTM approve an increase in appropriations for the fiscal 25 general fund budget from $144,582,612, to $145,913,589. This increase will be funded through an appropriation from Fund Balance and will be used in combination with utility rebates to fund a performance contract for lighting and building projects at its selected town properties. Mr. Hartwell.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So again, last Thursday, this was presented to our committee. And I'd like to point out that Sustainability Director Tyler Bone was there. Also, the Clean Energy Ad Hoc Committee was part of the presentation. And it is very clear that we have a strong support from various committees and groups around the town to get things like this done. And so I was very happy to see this kind of presentation. We're going to be saving money through this. We're going to be putting in solar installation, for example, at the animal shelter, lighting and air handling at Town Hall. There's going to be lots of ways that we're going to save money from energy through this. And the, the, the energy savings are expected to cover the capital costs that are required here. So again, this was approved unanimously, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Okay, we have a committee report and a motion from the committee.
From the state.
Any questions or comments for the committee on this transfer? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Hearing none, the item carries. Item 19, to consider and if appropriate, approve the following transfers from the Finance Director pursuant to the Meadow Street Boardwalk improvements. This project will be, Meadow Street Boardwalk, $6,100,000. This project will be funded largely through the state's Local Transportation Capital Improvement Program. Under the program, the town will fund the design, and the state covers the cost of construction. So from contingency, $100,000, to the transfer out fund for infrastructure enhancement, $100,000. The second half of the approval process is to increase the appropriation in the Infrastructure Enhancement Fund by approving the following: operating transfer in of $100,000, to miscellaneous state and federal grants of $6 million, for a total of $6,100,000, to capital infrastructure for an equivalent amount of $6,100,000. Also heard by Ways and Means, Mr. Hartwell.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Again, last Thursday. This is a very interesting project. Apparently, we heard that last, last week, that this project began with an individual in the town who really wanted to see this done, contributed a lot of his own time and expertise in the planning process. And what we're looking at here is. And what we're looking at here is a timber, eight-foot, I believe it is, wide boardwalk running from the brewery, across the street from the brewery, on the Indian, from Indian Neck, from the bridge there, along the river, all the way to South Monowees, to the bridge there. So, this is, I think, going to be a really very nice enhancement to the town. One of the things that Engineer Heffery talked about, in fact, was a, another crosswalk that's part of the planning process on South Monowees. It will connect some of the town much better, so that you could be able to walk from one part of town, go across this boardwalk, and come out at the brewery. That's really great. I'm also pushing him to do another crosswalk there at the, at that curve on the Indian Neck. Any, any of you who know District Five know that that's a really dangerous place to try to cross the street. Once again, this is a project where the town is putting in a hundred thousand dollars, and we're getting six million dollars to do this project. So the question is, when it's going to get done? It's not going to be immediate. There's a, there's, there are construction issues in terms of doing this, but they're going to be putting in pilings along the river, and this is going to be a permanent installation made out of timber, and it's going to be really terrific when it finally gets done. So, we, we definitely approve this project unanimously, put that in the form of a motion.
Okay. Thank you for that, great reports. We have a report from the committee and a recommendation. We have two hands, Representative Brooks, and then Representative Ingraham.
I would just like to call up First Selectman Cosgrove to recognize the individual that put the time in.
It's too bad he's not here. Thank you. As we just heard from the committee report, this project was initially, conceptually thought of by a resident, John Lust. John Lust has done a lot of work along our shoreline in terms of getting permitting for retaining seawalls, docks, and things of that nature. He's very familiar with the process. He came forward with this concept, and, you know, he ran with it. We off, he did a lot of, a lot of work gratis for the town in doing this. We've provided him some assistance, we did, but, but certainly, Mr. Lust deserves the credit and the recognition for bringing this project to where it is. You know, and the timing worked out, just in terms of, as we were completing the, the design, we were, this state program, the Lotzep program, the same one we'd be utilizing for the Main Street project, that they will fund boardwalks. So, as just heard in the committee report, this is, a hundred percent of the construction is covered by the state through this program. The town is obligated to cover the design costs, which, again, we are appropriating a hundred thousand dollars towards that design, in large part because of all the work that Mr. Lust has done on, like I said, for, at no cost to the town. So, thank you for taking the time to acknowledge the individual. It's, it's, he deserves the credit, and I think this will be a true asset to the town. While I have the floor, just one other thing I just want to, assuming you approve this project, I think it's important to note that the series of bond authorizations that you just approved are probably in the neighborhood of twenty-five million dollars in authorizations. However, it's really just under three million dollars of local dollars. So that's a leveraging of a serious amount of dollars. And, you know, that's in large part, and the lion's share of these are run through our engineering department. So I just need to acknowledge the department. You know, John Heffery's the town engineer, Jenna Quino, assistant engineer, and, you know, the department as a whole, for the work that they've done in pursuing these grants.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Representative Ingraham.
Thank you. Jamie just stole my thunder.
Oh.
John has done an amazing job with this project. I've been, you know, talking to him for a few years on it. It's, it's a great amount of lift that he did on, on his own. But now we, we can see where the Greenway Trail, instead of going, trying to walk down Meadow Street and this, it's going to be able to come right around and meet up just before the brewery. Maybe there could be some things that go on that, even if the properties that are going to be some, where we can go, public access at Mariners Landing, we can start getting those pieces put together. It'd be a great walk along the beach to get down to.
Branford Point.
Branford Point, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. It's a great project.
Thank you for your comment. Representative Adams, and then Representative Tohill, yes.
Just a quick comment through to, as a District Five resident, I just encourage everyone, this is just kind of, this is a beauty spot for the town in our district. And it's going to improve the lawability of the town. I'm just delighted that it's going to make that spot open to so many more people. I'm also thinking about, when I think of boardwalk, you know, I think we face, one way, you see all the natural wonders while you look up at the ocean. Go the other way, and there's often an opportunity for commercial development.
Yeah.
And there's such, I'm thrilled. This is one, just my gratitude to Mr. Lust.
Thank you, Representative Adams, Representative Tohill.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Just to add to the First Selectman's report, as well as Representative Hartwell's report, this is going to be wildly successful. At the time, I was a Branford Boy Scout, working with a troop. What we did is we took that old derelict trolley roadbed that goes from Pine Orchard to Stony Creek, and we worked on it for several years. We turned it into a boardwalk. It's, as I said, the, it's wildly successful. This is going to be the same thing. The other thing that's kind of interesting, right, great town engineered, engineering department, wonderful grants we got back from, you know, through their efforts, through Jamie's efforts. It's unbelievable. But anyway, so John said that he heard some other town got this LoSIP grant, which is, that's a U.S. Federal Transportation Grant, that this other town, you know, actually used the LoSIP for, for their own boardwalk. So John said, gee, what we should do, maybe, you know, the town of Branford should apply for LoSIP for this project. So, so they did, and sure enough, they got the money. And, so, right, all the town has to do is spend a hundred thousand for the engineering and, you know, all the construction costs, the timber. It's all going to be paid for by the, by a grant. I mean, it's, it's really, you know, it's outstanding.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Others? Yes, Representative Anderson.
Just one question about longevity, looking at this boardwalk for the lifetime. Is there going to be any money left over that we can kind of keep and hang on for future repairs down the road? Or does it have to go back if we don't use it all?
To be perfectly honest, that did not come up in any detail. But the idea of this was that it's, it's going to be a very permanent structure.
Right. It's going to have to be maintained over our lifetimes. So just looking into the future with all of these, especially in the waterways, the erosion, that kind of things take time to happen. We need to plan ahead as to how we're going to maintain this. I love it, I love the whole concept, but I'd like to see it stay for a long time. So I want to look at how we're going to maintain this.
I think we have an answer here. Representative Tohill is very excited about telling you.
No, I am, it's true. No, you're right. No, so, this question, that very question, Representative Anderson came up with the town engineer, John Hofferly, and he discussed it, that very same question. So his response was, first of all, you know, they're still deciding on the best materials for it. He said, it's all going to be wood. Possibly the walkway will be made of bamboo. He said, that could stand up the longest. He said, it's being built, you know, with the LoSIP grant. That, that is one of the requirements, that it's, you know, lasts twenty years. But he did say that, right after it's built, that, you know, it's going to be a town of Branford, you know, that the care of it has to be taken care of by the, by us, which I'm sure we'll be able to do, so.
Very good. Okay, well, this is, lots of energy on this, this one. Any other questions or comments for the committee or anybody else on this? Okay, hearing none, we will at last have a vote. All in favor of this hundred thousand dollar transfer for the boardwalk project, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, it carries. Thank you very much. Now, item twenty. To consider and if appropriate, approve a transfer request from the Finance Director for fiscal services for fiscal twenty-five budget. From contingency, twenty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars to overtime. For twenty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars, Representative Hartwell.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Again, last Thursday, we heard from the Finance Director, and this money is, this overtime money is because the Deputy of the Finance Department had to spend a very large amount of time trying to sort through the audit for, for 2024. There were issues with reconciliation of bank accounts. It had not been done for several years, apparently. It had to be worked on. It's our understanding that going forward, this, these issues will not reoccur. But, in fact, Catherine can't take the time off. She, she could take contingent, you know, she could take time away, but she can't because of operation requirements in the, in the department. And so, the overtime payment is the only fair way to, to deal with the situation. So, again, this was approved unanimously, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Okay. We have a committee recommendation. Are there any comments or questions for the committee? Hearing none, we'll have a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the item carries. Okay. Item twenty-one. To consider and if appropriate, approve a budget transfer request from the Director of Human Resources for fiscal twenty-six pursuant to the approval of the Supervisors Union Contract. From contingency, seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars. For wages and salaries, finance, eighty-five hundred dollars. For assessor, five, fifty-five hundred dollars. For inland wetlands, thirteen thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. For Building Department, eight thousand, five hundred. For Public Works, eleven thousand, seventy-one dollars. For Solid Waste, sixty-five hundred dollars. Engineering, eighty-five hundred dollars. Recreation, fifty-five hundred dollars. And Willoughby Wallace Library, fifty-five hundred dollars. And for accrued payroll expense, for finance, thirty-three dollars. For the assessor, twenty-two dollars. From inland wetlands, fifty-one dollars. From Building Department, thirty-three dollars. From Public Works, forty-three dollars. From Solid Waste, twenty-five. From Engineering, thirty-three dollars. From Recreation, twenty-two dollars. And from Willoughby Wallace, twenty-two dollars. And the transfer out fund for the Animal Control, for four thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars. For a total and equivalent amount of seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars. We have a corresponding Animal Control Fund transfer in resolution. For operating transfer in, seven, four thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars to wages and salaries, for four thousand, five hundred dollars. And from accrued payroll expense, eighteen dollars, for an equivalent amount of four thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars, which covers the transfer out for the Animal Control Fund. Resolution, that the RTM approve a transfer out of four thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars to the Animal Control Fund to fund salary changes pursuant to the collective bargaining process, bargaining agreement for the Supervisors Union. This transfer will increase the fiscal year 2026 budget in the Animal Control Fund from five hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars to five hundred and twelve thousand, fifty-six dollars. This was heard by Ways and Means, Mr. Hartwell.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Again, this is last Thursday. HR Director Liberta explained that these payments were mandated by the recently approved union contract. And so, we approved this unanimously. And although it's the last item on this agenda, and it was, we moved it up to the very beginning of our meeting, so that she could go home early. We did this, we did this unanimously, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Okay. We have a committee recommendation. Are there any questions or comments for the committee on this transfer? Hearing none, we'll have a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the item carries. Item twenty-two. To consider and if appropriate, approve in addition to the language of the short-term rentals ordinance passed at the September tenth, 2025 meeting, with the recommendation at that time to make this addition. Let me make sure I'm reading the correct language. Yeah, where's the? Okay, it is correct, this addition. The ordinance encodes reasonable restrictions on short-term rentals in Branford. This was heard by Rules and Ordinances, Mr. Henschel.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Okay, ordinances. This, the, the short-term residential rental ordinance was approved by the RTM, as you recall, in our nine, ten meeting. During that meeting, there was a proposed amendment to add the BR zone, that's a zoning zone, business restricted, to the list of Branford Planning and Zoning Commission residential zones impacted by the ordinance in section 2.1 of that ordinance. That motion was withdrawn pending Town Council review of the change. After discussion, we decided it was prudent to get them, get Town Council to review the change before we actually voted on it. So in the subsequent nine, sixteen meeting of Rules and Ordinances, the amendment was formally discussed and approved unanimously for possible adoption by the RTM. The Town Council has since then reviewed the amendment with no further comments, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a committee recommendation to amend the language of the previously approved short-term rentals ordinance. Are there any questions or comments on this change for the committee? Hearing none, we'll have a vote. Do we do a roll call on this one? Just with the language change?
Yes.
Roll call.
Yep.
Okay, we'll have a roll call, though.
Representative Adams. Representative Edelman.
Yes.
Representative Alphon.
Yes.
Representative Anderson.
Yes.
Representative Basile.
Yes.
Representative Black.
Yes.
Representative Bonnberger.
Yes.
Representative Brooks.
Affirmed.
Representative Dayhill.
Yes.
Representative Emerson.
Yes.
Representative Greenberg.
Yes.
Representative Hartwell.
Yes.
Representative Henschel.
Yes.
Representative Hines.
Yes.
Representative Ingraham.
Yes.
Representative Larson.
Yes.
Representative Mareska.
Yes.
Representative McCall.
Yes.
Representative Nuppani.
Yes.
Representative Papalizio.
Yes.
Representative Sharkey.
Yes.
Representative Stresla.
Yes.
Representative Tohill, yes. Representative Vernaram.
Yes.
Representative Waterman.
Yes.
It's passed unanimous, Madam Moderator.
Okay, we have a unanimous. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Item twenty-three. To consider and if appropriate, recommend amending the Town Blight Ordinance, Chapter 124 Blight Prevention, based on recommendations from the Town of Branford's Blight Enforcement Officer. RNO heard this on their last meeting, Mr. Henschel.
Thank, thank you, Madam Moderator. The original blight prevention ordinance was adopted by the RTM in 2021, as some of you may recall. This amendment was proposed by the RNO Working Group that had drafted the original ordinance in response to observations of the town's blight prevention officer after several years of enforcement. During the June seventeenth, September ninth, and September sixteenth meetings of the Rules and Ordinances Committee, the proposed amendment was discussed. I'm going to go through some of the key changes. It was, there were quite a few, but the, probably the best way is just to summarize what, what I think is the most substantive, substantive changes. think is the most substantive changes that were made to that ordinance. And I'll just list them out in the order that they occur in the ordinance itself. The first was the removal of town buildings from the exempt list of properties. Second was the addition of a definition of construction site blight, which was omitted in the original ordinance. Next was the addition of certain conditions regarding dumpsters constituting blight. That was, again, added. Dumpsters were not addressed in the first version. Addition of certain conditions of landscaping as blight with carefully defined exemptions for wetlands, established meadows and forested areas, no mow and ecologically landscaped areas, and undeveloped parcels of land. This was probably the key and most substantial change that was made to the ordinance when the first ordinance was drafted, the original ordinance was drafted. The subject of landscaping was discussed. We knew it was a major issue, but at that point, we felt that it was better not to address it in the ordinance because of the work that would be involved in defining it, et cetera. But based on recommendations of the enforcement officer, probably more than half of the actual complaints that had been made were in reference to landscaping, so we felt that it was time to address it and take a stab at it, which we've done. And we spent quite a bit of time discussing it. We had a lot of public input regarding this, and especially concerns over the fact that a lot of people now are considering transitioning their residential landscaping from the classic mowed lawn to areas that are either created as meadows or what is called no mow areas and other type forms of ecological landscaping that are different from the more conventional yards that we see. And we wanted to make sure that the ordinance recognized that and did not try to classify those or given the idea that those might be classified as blight. The next thing was the removal of the requirement for signature on the originating blight complaint. The feeling was that many people who saw something that they would like to bring the attention of the blight enforcement officer were reluctant to do it, be out of concern for their name going on a complaint, and it might be a neighbor or somebody they knew. And the actual making of a complaint is something that's a discretion of the blight enforcement officer, so it's better left to him to take on the role of making that complaint if he so deems, based on an observation of somebody in the general public. The next thing was deletion of the requirement for a blight team conference in the evaluation process. We, in the original ordinance, had pretty carefully defined a process of evaluating complaints of blight to make sure that we were recognizing the possibility that there might be extenuating conditions that were creating blight, and that those might be addressed in better forms than creating a, making a citation on the property with the help of the town. The feeling was that, in many cases, the blight enforcement officer is perfectly capable without creating a staff committee to review a particular complaint, to carry it forward, talk to the owner, et cetera. So, we took that out as a requirement. It still could be opted as an option of the blight enforcement officer if he so deemed it to be helpful to get other staff members in town involved in addressing a complaint, but not a necessity. The last thing was the removal of the involvement of what we call the Blight Appeals Committee as a requirement of the citation hearing process. This was a committee that the first selectmen was supposed to have found people in our community who would be willing to be members of a blight appeals committee. And the fact of the matter is that very few people in the community really want to be part of that particular process, so it was really not a feasible committee. And we also felt that the general form of handling hearings for citations, it's already defined in our code, was completely adequate to address the hearing process without that committee. So, we removed that committee altogether from the ordinance. Those are the key changes. There were some definitional changes that were added just to make sure that everything that we were discussing in the text was, had, were required, had a definition, appropriate definition, or if not, we actually struck a couple of definitions that were not needed. But that substantially is the, are the changes that were made in this amended ordinance. So, the amendment was discussed and passed for possible adoption by the RTM without opposition by a vote of four to zero with one abstention. Town Council has reviewed the amendment with no further comments, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Thank you very much. It was a lot to take in. Are there any comments or questions? Representative Black.
I'll be opposing this amendment tonight. I know there were a lot of changes made to it, the original draft that came to us would have required essentially clear-cutting every bit of a plot of land and landscaping it. Landscaping in general is bad for the environment. A lot of chemicals are used, and, you know, grass in general is bad for the environment. Certainly doesn't absorb as much water as a natural habitat would. And, of course, it destroys wildlife habitat as well. Also, the blight ordinance is always, there's a lot of language in here about special provisions for low-income people, for maybe neurodivergent people, for the elderly, but at the end of the day, there's still fines, liens, the ability of the town to go into somebody's property and place a lien on it. And this is expanding it into areas of landscaping that we'd left alone. Because, you know, how somebody's cutting their grass, you know, in my opinion, should be their prerogative. I know there's some exceptions here. I'm not sure everyone will get into that, so I'll be opposing this amendment. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Representative Black. Other comments or questions? Representative Adams.
Yeah, thank you. For you, Representative Black, for just a clarification, my understanding is that the original language was actually more directed around cutting grass, so that this new language provides more options for what you just described. Am I incorrect in that?
As far as?
Thanks.
The present language has no provision about vegetation or grass. There was an initial proposal that was more direct, and it's been drawn back some.
Okay, since clearly I was going with that.
Yeah. It depends what you call the original.
Thank you.
Mr. Henschel.
Yeah, that is correct, what Representative Black has said in terms of the ordinance. I just wanted to point out that in all of our ordinances in the town, there is certainly a bit of subjective quality to their enforcement, and I think that the blight ordinance, probably more than any other, has a subjective quality to it. Rather than just steer away from it for that reason, we've tried to create an ordinance originally that would be, as much as possible, allow a blight enforcement officer to be able to have tools to go to somebody in the public that might, somebody might have made a complaint about, and talk with them about, you know, addressing that complaint, but use discretion in terms of what the next steps might be. And in a lot of cases, look at the possibility of helping them through a resolution to the issue without getting into issuing of either a warning or a citation. I think in the experience of the current enforcement officer, I'm not sure that they have actually issued any citations. They may have issued a couple of warnings, but most of the complaints, and there have been numerous ones that have been addressed, have been resolved without getting into that formal step. And that was, in fact, something that we hoped would happen when we crafted the original ordinance. So, again, I think that we've tried in both the original language and in the changes made in this amended version to recognize as much as possible the subtleties of this particular type, this issue of how you address blight, and, again, allow the town to have tools, and at the same time, act with discretion in enforcing it. Thank you.
Representative Toohill.
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. Just to add to what Chairman Henschel said, I mean, as he said right back in 2021, we passed this blight ordinance, and then we hired, Jamie hired the blight officer. The blight officer told Jamie that he had some ideas, some suggestions to improve this for Branford residents. So, that's what started all this again. And so, you know, we talked with him, and at that time, you know, in '21 through, after he was hired, as it was already stated by Chairman Henschel, the question of vegetation was, it was deliberately left out of the blight ordinance because we didn't want to, you know, to get into it really about, you know, the height of somebody's lawn, for example. But then, the blight officer said that the majority of the, what, the 1,000 calls that he had received since being hired was about landscaping issues. People are worried that the person down the street or next door, they're landscaping, if it's, if it's not taken care of, right, that it reduces the property value of, you know, of their own house. So, they call up the blight officer, and, you know, they want to discuss it, see what they can do, see what the, see what their rights are. And all those years, for those calls, the blight officer had to say, "Well, I have no jurisdiction over that. You know, it's not in the blight ordinance. We can't control vegetation." You can't do that in a town, you know? People pay taxes, they call the government, they want, they want to be able to discuss it, they want a forum, you know, to talk to somebody about it. You know, the same thing with planning and zoning and everything else. So, this is what, this is the reason, it's one of the reasons why we added this. Now, it's not that bad either. It's not about the height of your lawn. This is what it says, okay? It says that "This is blight. Previously landscaped areas that have been left unattended for a minimum of a full growing season and are characterized by some of the following conditions: turf grass over 12 inches in height, landscaping ground cover, and planting beds overgrown and overrun by a quantity of invasive species of plants, weeds, vines; unattended landscaping is encroaching on neighboring properties; fallen dead tree branches and shrubs have accumulated on the ground." Now, the RNO committee with Chairman Henschel, there was a public hearing that we had, and there was a lot of good input. There was a lot of people that came, and they were concerned about the vegetation of the blight ordinance. So, what we did was, we, everyone agreed, we carved out a special exception, and that's in F5. It says, "The following are exempt from landscape blight." It says, "Existing wetlands and well-established meadows, forested areas, defined and purposely managed no-mow or ecological landscaping areas which are devoid of significant invasive species with defined boundaries which do not encroach on neighboring properties. Such areas may include cultivated fields or cultivated forested areas." So, it's not super, you know, super-reaching, but, you know, it's, it's a compromise, really. So, I think we should all pass it. We can always change it in the future if, you know, if there's any problems. Thank you.
Thank you. There were some other hands.
Madam Moderator, I also rise in opposition to the changes, along with the landscaping. But to be brief, it was for the same reasons that Representative Black did, since we're getting late here. And also, the no need for having a signature or somebody making a complaint. You know, I really feel that people that are making a complaint, while it can be kept confidential, it should be not coming in anonymously. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Representative Ingraham. Representative Bonnberger.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. While I'm certainly in agreement with Representative Black and Representative Ingraham, both about the importance of taking care of individuals' property, and particularly with the signature, and that's the first thing you think of when you think of a signature, is, you know, anonymous informants, which violates a really important principle of democracy. I am ultimately going to support this for the reason that Representative Toohill brought up, which is, for those of you who weren't there, it was a compromise, you know? Nobody got everything that they wanted out of this, and everybody got something. So, I, ultimately, I do support it, and I hope that you'll support it as well.
Representative Hartwell.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm a little bit torn here because I hear what I'm hearing from Representative Black and Representative Ingraham. And I understand the idea of government overreach, and obviously, we don't want that. But I also know that, you know, almost daily, for many, many years, I was passing a corner where we all know, that was just, it was awful. And I kept thinking, "Well, why can't something be done about that?" Now, I didn't go to the blight officer, I didn't put in a complaint, but every time my wife and I drove by, we're going, "This is awful." And it was a major intersection in town where this house was. And thankfully, they sold that house, and it's cleaned up, and it looks really nice, and I'm happy. And so, things sometimes work out. I'll be supporting this. I'm hopeful, and I'm pretty confident, actually, that overreach is not going to be an issue. And if it is, we can fix it by finding another blight officer.
Be forewarned. Representative Brooks.
I'm not rising in opposition to this ordinance, but I'm not rising in approval. I think I came in, I came into this meeting with my mind, you know, I'm going to go this way, and then Representative Black reminded me of one of the major things that he and I agree on. And then, so I waffled back the other way. And then Representative Toohill spoke, and I, and I went back, and I said, "Well, that makes a lot of sense." And then Representative Ingraham spoke, and that made a lot of sense. And it's, and I'm just being honest, this is very difficult. This is a very hard decision. But I remember a famous line, and I won't say where it's from, "But if none of the sides are happy, it's probably a good deal." So, we'll see what happens at the vote.
Okay. Representative McColl, gotcha.
Oh, no, while we're on the topic of cutting or not cutting grass, I realized I was cutting my grass Sunday morning, and I was the only one making noise in the entire street. In Branford, when you could, could not cut? I know some towns have, you can't make noise before eight, or you can't make?
Can you be, can you use the microphone, Mark?
He's asking about noise ordinance at 7 o'clock.
7 o'clock.
Yes, 7 a.m.
I got up really early Sunday morning, I wanted to get my workout done so I can watch TV. I was cutting the grass, and I realized I was the only one making noise in the entire street. So, I was just wondering if there's a?
8 o'clock, I think it's 8 o'clock.
Is there a before and after time?
Before, after 8 o'clock, I think that's.
After 8 in the morning?
8 in the morning.
What's the cutoff time in the night?
I don't know.
Is it 10 o'clock?
Noise ordinance is 10 o'clock.
If you can see it.
10 p.m.
If nobody yelled at you, it's okay.
I kept looking up the street.
I know for construction, it's 8 a.m. I know for construction, it's 8 a.m. I'm not sure about mowers.
No, take it from me, 10 p.m. is quiet time, 7 a.m., 10 p.m. to 7 a.m. No, take it from me, 10:00 PM is quiet time, 7:00 AM, 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM.
Monday to, that's seven days a week, Monday to Sunday.
Calling the question?
Correct. Because I've been fined many times.
All right, we're going to move off the noise ordinance, please. Representative Black?
Domestic power equipment is actually exempt.
Okay. We're going to move off the noise because we're still on blight, okay? All right, let's stay with blight for the time being. Okay, do we have any other comments or questions on blight? The blight ordinance, the changes?
Speaker of Noise.
Call the question.
Well, we're done. We're all, we're going to do that now? Yes, Representative Anderson?
Blight, a lot of work was put into this blight ordinance, back and forth, a lot of conversation. And in the very beginning, it was never designed to be neighbor against neighbor. That was never the design. It was supposed to be, if a neighbor is having a problem, if their elderly, they can't afford it, something is going on, the community can come together to help. The, what's his name?
Peter Semino?
No, the blight ordinance.
John Rotuski.
Yes, thank you. He is such a reasonable person. He looks at each incident as an individual, and he asks all the right questions for the individual to see what the problem is. It's never neighbor or against neighbor.
Okay.
I will be supporting this. There's a lot of work that went into it. It's a thoughtful process, and it's not about fines. We're not looking to fine anybody, just solve a problem. Somebody's having a problem with their lawn, their landscaping, they can't afford it, something.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to call the question right now, and this is a great example of bipartisan and compromised on the issues. This is really a very good discussion, so, but I think it's time to call the question and have a vote.
Madam Moderator, you cannot unilaterally call the question, but you can ask if anybody wants to.
Will you call the question, please?
No.
We're done.
You can call for a vote.
We're done.
Call for a vote.
You just have a vote.
We've called for a vote, okay. Do you want to do a roll call vote?
We have to.
We have to, yeah, it's an ordinance. Go ahead.
Representative Adams.
Approved.
Representative Edelman.
Strongly approved.
Representative Alphon.
No.
Representative Anderson.
Yes.
Representative Basile.
Yes.
Representative Black.
No.
Representative Bonnenberger.
Yes.
Representative Brooks.
Pass.
Representative Dayhill.
Yes.
Representative Everson.
Yes.
Representative Greenberg.
Yes.
Representative Hartwell.
Yes.
Representative Henshaw.
Yes.
Representative Hines.
Yes.
Representative Ingraham.
No.
Representative Larson.
Yes.
Representative Mareska.
Yes.
Representative McCall.
Yes.
Representative Nupani.
Yes.
Representative Papalizio.
Yes.
Representative Sharkey.
Yes.
Representative Schresta.
Yes.
Representative Toohill, yes. Representative Vernaram.
Yes.
Representative Waterman.
Yes.
And we go back to Representative Brooks. The blight ordinance amendments passed, Madam Moderator.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. That concludes our, oh, no, sorry, item 24, to consider and if appropriate, create an ordinance.
I thought that was a vote on calling the question, not the vote for the-
We wouldn't-
There was no motion made.
That was my question.
There was no motion made.
We don't have a roll-
Nobody called the question. They called for-
The conversation I heard is we had to take a vote.
Right.
But I was going to vote no to the other thing anyways. It works out the same.
Okay. I don't think we would have a roll call vote on calling the question anyway, so.
I only pointed it out because we have to vote, too.
Okay. I don't think there was a motion, actually.
That's all.
No.
Okay, item 24, to consider and if appropriate, create an ordinance to recharacterize the Parks and Open Space Committee as a chartered commission.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Henshaw.
First of all, I'd like to say that that's probably the best type of vote that we could possibly do, where we have a mix across the board of, you know, people before and against it, and some very reasonable thoughts on both sides. So I applaud everybody, both who was against it and for it, and their thoughtful comments. And thank you. And also, I'd like, before I go on, to just thank the Rules and Ordinances Committee for the last two years of what I view as a very productive and successful, we got a lot done, and I thank everybody, especially Representative Black and Representative Bonnenberger, who will be leaving the RTM this year. So thank you all for that. So on to the last item on the agenda. This is an amendment to Chapter 190, Parks, Greens, and Recreational Areas, Article 3, Sections 190-7 through 190-14. During the 9/16 meeting of Rules and Ordinances, a proposed amendment to Article, the article I just read was discussed. This amendment was requested by the Chair of the Branford Park and Open Space Authority to codify a name change, a change in name from the Park and Open Space Authority to an Open Space Commission, to clarify the role of that body. That body just addresses open space and not the parks, and there was confusion, I think, on the public of what exactly their purview was, so they decided to do a name change to a commission and to omit the word park from it. So the proposed amendment substitutes that name change throughout the article, wherever the former name occurred, it's been changed to the proposed name change. In addition, there were minor changes to the text of Section 190-11.8.2 and 190-11.8. Those were discussed, as well as in addition to a new line, 190-11.818. Those were essentially three changes, very minor in nature. One of them was to clarify in a list of types of vehicles that couldn't drive on open space land, clarification about electric forms of vehicles, which are more prevalent these And there was also a proposed change at the end to change the fine amount, they wanted to change it, but the proposal was to change it from $100 to $1,000. However, that's far in excess of what I think we're allowed by state statute, so we agreed on changing it to $200. And that's what's in the proposed amended version. The amendment was formally discussed and approved unanimously for possible adoption by the RTM. Town Council has reviewed the amendment with no further comments, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a recommendation from the committee. Are there any questions or comments on this, these changes? Representative Everson?
I will be voting in favor of this. I think it's a good way to characterize what it is that the Open Space Commission actually works on, and they do a lot of work in this town, and we should commend them for that. I also want to commend the members of the Rules and Ordinances Committee. They had a lot of heavy lifts this year, and in a nonpartisan way, we passed the Harbor Management Commission and short-term rentals. Now, the blight ordinance has been updated, and we're about to make another change, and it's very good work. So thank you, Chairman Henshaw, for all of the work you've done and your committee.
Okay. Thank you. Other comments, questions? Okay, Representative Adams?
I may be speaking as a Quaker, but in our minutes, we sometimes minute appreciation. I'm wondering if we can formally minute an appreciation to the RNO, because it was, like you said, it was a, I don't know if that's even parliamentary, Quakers do it all the time.
Well, I think we'll leave that up to the clerk. Will you put that in?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
All right. Wonderful. Okay, anything else? Any other questions on this? Okay. All right, we'll have a vote, all in favor, oh, no, roll call, sorry, it's an ordinance, go ahead.
Representative Adams.
Approved.
Representative Edelman.
Yes.
Representative Alphon.
Yes.
Representative Anderson.
Yes.
Representative Basile.
Yes.
Representative Black.
Yes.
Representative Bonnenberger.
Yes.
Representative Brooks.
Yes.
Representative Dayhill.
Yes.
Representative Everson.
Yes.
Representative Greenberg.
Yes.
Representative Hartwell.
Yes, sir.
Representative Henshaw.
Yes.
Representative Hines.
Yes.
Representative Ingraham.
Yes.
Representative Larson.
Yes.
Representative Mareska.
Yes.
Representative McCall.
Yes.
Representative Nupani.
Yes.
Representative Papalizio.
Yes.
Representative Sharkey.
Yes.
Representative Schresta.
Yes.
Representative Toohill, yes. Representative Vernaram.
Yes.
Representative Waterman.
Yes.
I was approved, Madam Moderator, unanimous.
Okay, unanimous approval, okay. Thank you. All right, item 25, other business. Representative Brooks?
I know it's late, so I'm only taking a minute. I just want to, I understand we're not all going to be here next term, so I want to thank everybody for their service. I want to thank everybody for their dedication. I think, I think we've done a great job working back and forth, so I want to thank that. But I especially, I want to start by thanking Marion Amore. We came into this 18 years ago together, and I want to thank you for everything you've done. And then, Peter Black, a titan of us all. We will miss you. Thank you so much for everything you've done. I know you're not leaving, I know you're going to still be involved, but, I mean, without you, I don't, I don't, I don't know how we go forward, so I just wanted to thank you as well, and remind the public, and I guess all of us, although I think we'll know, go out and vote November 4th for anybody you want, for anybody you want. And we'll see you in some form all out there soon enough. Thanks for indulging me.
Okay. I'm, yes, Representative Ingraham.
Throwing on my other hat for the Veterans Parade Committee. November 9th is the Veterans Parade Ceremony and Parade, 1:00 on the green. November 1st, if anyone wants it, and you'll see it on Facebook, because I'll put it out there, about putting the flags at the veterans' graves, that's 8:00 on November 1st. All that'll go out in the newspaper also.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Representative Vernaram?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I apologize, my voice is a little hoarse, familiarly at the Yankees for the past couple of games. Hasn't been, hasn't really been, it looks like it's not going to be a very fun ride for them. But I just want to say what an absolute honor and a privilege it's been serving with all of you. I came on the RTM in 2021, and I have just learned so much since then, and particularly by watching all of you. So thank you for your service, and I look forward to continuing to serve Branford with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the bottom of the Victoria.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I would like us to stand maybe and give a round of applause to our retiring and outstanding First Electman, Jamie Cosgrove.
It's been an honor serving as First Electman, serving with this all. I appreciate your time and your commitment as volunteers who spend a lot of time, not only in this meeting tonight, but in meetings and just understanding the issues, and coming in here representing the constituents to make our people better. So it's been an honor and a pleasure. I love the people.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I get to speak. Other business, under other business, I haven't said, those of you, I haven't said much for the last two years. I've read a lot of things, but I haven't said much, and those of you who've known me a long time know how hard that is. So first of all, I wanted, Frank stole my thunder a little bit, I wanted to wish the First Electman, Cosgrove, Jamie, the best of luck in your future endeavors. There's a lot, I'm going to just take a couple minutes, because I, it's been amazing. I want to acknowledge our caucus leader, Representative Everson Tracy, thanks a lot for your leadership. Representative Vernaram, I think you have a great heart, and I think you've got a good future, and I wanted to thank you for your work. My old friend Frank, who I've known since I was 16 years old, and, 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 a long way, and Frank's one of the lifers, right? One of the people who's most committed.
It's a life sentence.
It is. And Peter, Peter Black, whose family I've known as long as I've known Frank, and your, your work has been always wonderful and frustrating, and, you know, all of that. And Ray, these are people who have given a long time to this service, and I wanted to acknowledge that. We've worked together. Peter Henshaw, who is next to the word equanimity in the dictionary is a picture of Peter Henshaw, and I would like to be him when I grow up. My colleagues in the 4th District, Dan Edelman and Gianno Schresta, it's been an honor. I was born and raised in the 4th, lived many, many, many other places, and then came back, and never in a million years did I think I would be representing the 4th Ward or Branford Hills or anything like that. I love that place. It's the heart and soul of the working people of Branford up there, and they deserve our work and our attention. My colleague Josh also stole my thunder a little bit. We came in together, we've been close colleagues a long time, and I wish, I hope with all of my heart, he's our next First Electman, and I will be and have been working to support him. It's been a pleasure. I want to do one other thing. I want to encourage the people watching, if you haven't, if you have any time at all, get involved, run for something, be on the RTM, volunteer for a board and commission. If you can't do that in the kind of political arena, there are lots and lots of amazing nonprofits that do great work in town. I don't know if anybody went to the Branford Microfund Fun Day on Sunday, and it was amazing, and place things like the Microfund do amazing work for this town, and it's unique in the country. So the community dining room, all of that, there are many opportunities. You will learn, you will grow, you will love, learn to love your community so much more. I really encourage people to do that. I am not leaving the public realm, I'm going, going to be working very closely with one of those nonprofits, which is now called At Home Branford, and I'll be working to bring housing within reach in our town. And I want to thank everybody for everything that I've listened to and heard, and tonight's meeting was a real wonderful example of what it could be in town, where we're not sniping and we're not making political points, but we're really taking on the issues to benefit the town. So it's been a privilege. Thank you very much, and see you soon. And I think now I need a motion to return.
Some move.
I'll check.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any votes?
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.